General people, we're on the air. No more jokes.
No, not at your expense, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a continuation, assuming I'm correct, that we have 93 Waylem Road, Lunenburg, a petition for special permit to sell ten used cars. This is a continuation meeting, and the board here is to see how the applicant has worked to achieving the goal that he wants. And with that, we'll open it up. We have a couple of letters first. You have been doing some work, obviously, and you've been communicating with two of the boards in town. Two of the boards in town have sent letters which become a part of the public record and need to be read into the record now, so we'll read them in, and you can respond to them whether you like or dislike, and the reasons for that. And so with that, Lisa, would you please?
Okay, this first letter is dated September 10th, 2013, to Mr. Donald F. Bowen, Chairman of the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals regarding 93 Waylem Road. Mr. Bowen, the attached real estate tax statement for parcel 114-67 at 93 Waylem Road shows a total principal and interest on real estate taxes due of $37,687.54 as of September 10th, 2013. There is also approximately $5,119.97 of personal property taxes due for the four different businesses, names at the same address, 93 Waylem Road. On April 11th, 2013, Mr. Aliva entered into a payment agreement. The payment was to pay $1,000 each month beginning May 1st, 2013. As of today's date, Mr. Aliva has made only two payments of $1,000. Therefore, he is not in compliance with the payment agreement. Let me know if you have any questions about this information. Sincerely, Shirley A. McKay, Treasurer and Tax Collector.
It's difficult to read these into the record, but they are a matter of public record for everybody, so we must do that, painful as it might appear. With that, the second letter.
The second letter I received today from the Lunenburg Board of Health from James Greffy dated September 11th. This office has received a plan for corrective actions attached at the above-mentioned address. The actions proposed would allow proper monitoring of the site for leaks and spills that may be associated with the used car business. If the work is completed and inspected by this office, the board would not have an issue with the proposed business with the following conditions. One, the operation at this location can't create dust, odors, or noise in violation of the Air Pollution Control Regulations 301 CMR 700. Two, all hazardous materials must be handled in accordance with local, state, and federal laws and regulations. If mechanical work is proposed for the site, the petitioner must be approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, MDEP, as a hazardous way generated to ensure proper handling and disposal of materials generated at this location. Three, no tires shall be stored at the site. Four, vehicles must be maintained in a condition so that fluids don't leak onto the ground. Five, in buildings used for storage and repair of vehicles, no floor drains are allowed unless in compliance with the plumbing code and regulations of the Mass DEP.
Shall I read?
Yes.
You paused.
Well, there's a response to the letter. It looks like Mr. Aliva sent a letter to James Greffy dated 9/17/13 to the Neshoba Associated Boards of Health. In response to your letter...
What?
Excuse me?
9/17.
Oh, 9...
Seven.
I'm sorry. 13. "In response to your letter with regard to the oil spots at 93 Waylem Road, Waylem Sales and Service, I will be cutting and removing the spots out and recycling them at PJ Keating Company. I will be filling in the spots with graded base after you inspect the areas of concern. I will also seal coat the paved area and around garage after inspection. Sincerely, Edward W. Aliva, Jr." That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The applicant would like to talk and address any of the issues. You have the floor.
Edward W. Aliva, Jr., 93 Waylem Road, Waylem Sales and Service. First of all, I'd like to address the Board of Health issue. As the letter I read, I have been in touch with Mr. Greffy, and we did a walkover last week and decided the best thing to do with the oil spots was to dig them out, remove them. He came down today and inspected the areas that I've dug out and removed. So if you would have got on there today, you'd see that there's quite a bit of asphalt piled up in front of the garage, but I'm not hiding anything. I wanted to show him today. The piles of asphalt are there. He came down at 2:00 today, saw the spots were taken care of. There was two more spots that he wanted to see dug out. They will be recycled down at PJ Keating Company in Lunenburg. So he and I are on the same page with the asphalt and the oil spill. The other thing was a tire issue. There were four tires there. He explained to me about the mosquito breeding, and it's another bylaw of the town, so I removed those today also. So I think as far as the Board of Health issue, I'm on the same page with Neshoba. And as the letter read, it's going to take another couple of days for him. He wants to come back and make sure everything is in compliance. The other issue, as far as... I entered into a payment plan with the town, and I'll check my records, but I believe I've paid April, May, June, July. I owe for August, but I do need my permits to be operating my garage. I have closed my garage. My garage has been closed since April, trying to straighten out the issues with your board. And I, like I've said before, I really need that garage to be open to make the payments. I mean, I do owe for August, and I plan to make it Friday, but the town hall is closed, but I'll make that August payment on Monday morning. But I need to get that garage up and running to bring in revenue to make my payments.
Okay. Any other comments at this time?
Excuse me?
Any other comments at this time?
Yeah, the other comment I have is, just briefly, I've been at that site for 26 years, and it's been said in this room from neighbors that I haven't been the best neighbor. And, you know, the garage hasn't been perfectly manicured, but I'm there every day, I mean, other than Sundays, although some Sunday mornings I go down. And, you know, there's more to being a good neighbor than having a manicured yard. I mean, it is a garage, and I have left goods out in the yard, but I do my best to be a good neighbor. I mean, I wave to the neighbors. There's been problems through the years, and not at my shop, but, you know, like any neighborhood, there's been arguments, and I've gone over and tried to... And done my best as a neighbor to talk to people. I mean, there was a day when, I can remember 10 years ago, when the neighbor across the street, he was stuck in traffic in an accident on 495, and his kids get off the bus, and he called me up and said, "Hey, Bill, did my kids get off the bus?" I said, "Yes, they did." He says, "Could you go over and tell them I'm in an accident and let them know I'm on my way?" I mean, you know, that to me is part of being a good neighbor also, and I want the board to know that. I mean, I'm not... I just didn't come into this town and say, "I'm going to take over Waylem Road and run my trucks up and down the street." I mean, I try to be... I try to run my business the best I can. I mean, sometimes, you know, the trucks may have been loud, or the cars may have been loud, and we took a muffler off it and ran it outside for a few minutes. But, I mean, I'm conscious of people around me, and I will continue to do so. I mean, I've been there since 1986, and, you know, I do get along with most of the neighbors. I mean, there are a few that have comments for me and have comments in this room, and maybe even tonight. And lately, people have been taking pictures of the shop and pictures of myself and a guy that I got working with me, but, you know, I'll do my best to stay there. I mean, I want to continue the business, but I need my permits. I've got to be in compliance, and so I'll work with the board.
I visited the site belatedly. I was out of town, so at 6:31, I left my place on Lake Shirley, drove to the site, and was able to make it here on time. And I needed to see it because else I wouldn't feel I could even sit here without knowing what has transpired. I believe that you've done some work. There are no Scotch pines that I expected to see, so I was disappointed with that. And the general area has been cleaned up, probably needs a little trimming here and there. I kind of expected, to think from the plan, that the commercial vehicles were going to be, like, to the left and the cars to the right. That was my thought. I may be wrong. Am I wrong? I'd ask you the question, then turn it over to the other members of the board. Am I wrong in my thought process? Because you have trucks here and then trucks over there, and they look like that's going to be their permanent home, I would think.
Do you want me to respond?
All right, go ahead.
No, I'm going to follow the plan. There is a truck in the first bay, which we're finishing up, and there is a dump body in the yard that you had discussed before with me. And as soon as that truck is done, that body will be back on the truck and out of there. And there is... I did remove two of the vehicles that I told you that I would have a hard time parting with, but I did pile with two more vehicles. So as of today, there is two unregistered vehicles in the yard and one loader that I'm using to move things, so I'm there. I'm there.
I was... My first comment, just observing the lot, and I suspect and hope that you think the same way, that the lot needs grooming. And I see the pile that you spoke about with the front-end loader displaying the material that came out of the ground. I saw what you saw. And... But I think the end point, my expectations would be that the lot needs grooming...
I couldn't...
...to present the automobiles that would make me feel warm and comfortable, put myself in the place of being a potential purchaser, and say, "Would I buy as to what I see?" And I think, and I hope, you share that. With that, I've made my comments, and I turn it over to the board for their comments and recommendations.
I would just like you to... I know it's been a while. We've had a couple of continuances, and I'm on the same page with Don. But I'd like to have you review exactly what you envision you're going to do with this site from this point on, because before it kind of looked like a construction yard. Still, parts of it look like a construction yard. We're talking about the used cars, you know, and I want to just review what your plans are. Are we still going to be some construction? Are we still going to have the 10 cars up front? Are we still going to do the repairs? Now, just give me your view of where we stand now and where we're going.
Okay. What I'm asking the Lunenburg ZBA board for is, is a car licensed to display 10 cars to the right side of the garage? Proposed shrubs behind the cars that are for sale. In the far-right corner of the property, there would be four sanders, because I asked the board before to be able to buy and sell sanders. Not necessarily the whole truck, just the sander bodies, like there are other car dealers in the area that are doing the same thing. And also to have displayed five or six snowplows for sale. They'll be on the right side of the property. To the left side of the property is where employee parking would be. And I can't use it as a contractor's yard because it's just not big enough. I mean, to run a contractor's yard is pipe, is stone, is loam involved, and that's not what I'm asking to do there. But with the repair shop, we do... I do have a mechanic that does work on my dump trucks, and I would like to be able to fix the dump trucks. We brought one back today because we had a problem with the dump body, and that's why there was an orange truck there when you went tonight. You know, but avoiding bringing the trucks back. But I'm going to be honest with the board. I mean, I can't bring my trucks to somebody else to repair them. I mean, I should be able to bring them back to my garage and be able to fix them within the operating hours of the garage and make any necessary repairs, hence not having any oil spills.
Trucks have a propensity of needing constant maintenance. Am I correct?
Yeah, not every day, but weekly.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'm not going to bring back 10 trucks to the garage. Today I brought... Yesterday, I brought back one truck, and maybe I'll keep it to a minimum of two trucks there at times to repair rather than bringing back a half a dozen trucks in one day. You know, we can... There's only one mechanic of myself.
Lisa, would you take note of his thought process of two trucks? I'm thinking of that in terms of potential conditions that would require strict reinforcement. I mean, I'm just throwing them out. I'm not saying anything except I just wanted to take notes of what you're proposing, and not to say that the board agrees with you, but go ahead.
You know, I remember years ago when Joe Bolotto was one of the selectmen. He, you know, we... I had an issue with the neighbors in repairing the trucks, and, you know, he said the same thing, "Man, I can't bring these trucks to another garage." I mean, we do have the equipment inside that garage to repair it, repair these trucks, and I do enjoy doing that. And I want to be able to make my own repairs on my trucks and others. But I'll keep it to a minimum, and keep in mind all the setbacks and the Youngs Road, which is the side street, not to block the view of Waylem Road. I've been there long enough to know the issues and know that I can't block traffic. I can't cause a site, you know, a site problem pulling out of Youngs Road, taking a left or right, you've got to be able to see up Waylem Road. So I've been there long enough to know the traffic situation.
Hmm.
But it's just the lot's too small to... Some of these trucks I have have trailers. They have... I have a truck that has a 28-foot trailer. I mean, you just can't bring it there.
Yeah, you'd have to do that off-site.
I do. I have another site out of town where I keep those other trucks, but once in a while, these trucks have to come back for repairs, along with the used cars. I mean, you sell a car, it's going to... Hopefully not, but they're going to come back for some sort of repair.
I understand the used car business, once you get the second-class license, you'll be able to literally sell vehicles that never see the site. In other words, you go down at auction and buy it, and then have a situation where you sell them...
Exactly.
...without it, so therefore you could potentially sell 40, 50 cars a year that would never see the site.
Part of these cars will never make it back to the shop, and I'd be surprised if I ever had that.
I was just trying to understand the nature of your business. That's why I asked the question.
Oh, okay. Yeah, a lot of times the cars would be sold before I even get back to the shop. Just do it by telephone. They won't even necessarily come back to 93 Waylem Road.
Okay. It's your question.
Okay. No, no. So the trucks that you're talking about, what do you run with that business? Is that a plowing business that you have with those trucks?
In the summertime, we move sand, sand and gravel with the...
Okay.
The three dump trucks?
Year-round business?
They're year-round trucks, yes. And they require...
And the sanders that you're talking about, those are for sale, correct? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I do have two sanders that I... You know, the other concern, and I remember a neighbor, and I can address that right now too, since we're on the subject. I do have two trucks. I work for Mass Highway, and when Mass Highway... A lot of times, we'll get the truck ready before a snowstorm, and when Mass Highway calls, it's usually before the storm even starts, and we leave them down in Sterling for the whole storm. And so the trucks aren't sitting at the garage, running and back and forth and loading up sand. That's not what I'm doing there. I mean, that would be a contractor's yard if I was going back and forth, loading these sanders up with a loader at the garage, and that's not the nature of my business at 93 Waylem Road. The only thing I've done in the past is we've worked on the trucks prior to a storm. Trucks get called out, and they don't come back sometimes for two or three days, so it's not like the trucks are back and forth out of the garage. My neighbors see Lunenburg Highway trucks 10 times more than they see my trucks, because my trucks don't come back during a snowstorm. And that's how I run it.
Other questions? From other members?
Well, you have the 10 proposed parking spaces for your used car vehicles, and then you have a shrub and security gate. Will the dumpster in that be behind the security gate as well as the sanders and plow blades that you're proposing?
I don't have a dumpster.
I thought that... Or does that belong to the church or something?
Yes.
I thought there was one on the right there.
No.
It was on your side of the wooden fence.
That was the dump body that... We're repairing a truck inside the garage right now. We had to fix the frame on it, so by doing so, we had to remove the... It's a 14-foot dump body. We had to take it off and put it in the yard while we did the truck repair inside. And then, like I said, that will be back on that truck shortly, I hope.
So, but then the blades and the sanders that you would like to store there for sale will be behind the security gate and shrubs?
Yes.
As proposed?
Yes.
So there would be complete access, open access for a fire truck on the right-hand side?
Yes.
And the fence that's there now, will you replace that?
Yes, I'm going to remove it.
Remove it and replace it with something?
Right, to make it work for the new grounds. I didn't want to do it until the board approved, hopefully approved, the license, and then I'll take the fence down and I have new fencing to come in.
Would that include over on the back, left-hand side also?
Yes. On the left-hand side? Yes.
Yeah, where, you know, you have the orange truck or something you said today parked behind the building.
Yes. That fence needs to be replaced also.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I mean, basically, is your intent to just get the license so you can go to the auctions and buy and sell used cars? Do you really think you'll have 10 used cars here at any given time?
No, I don't.
When you said "no," what did you say?
I don't think that I'd have 10 cars there. I mean, you know, on an average, it'd be five to eight. But I... I mean, just, you know, say, for example, if you want an example, I mean, if I was at the auction and they had six Ford Tauruses, which I happen to think is a great car, I would, you know, I would purchase six Ford Tauruses and bring them back to the shop. They may not sell overnight, but... So there's a case, and I could have already have four on the lot. So, I mean, there could be, at some points, there would be 10 vehicles, but I would honestly say very rarely.
Right, I just wonder how you would get back and forth to the area behind the fence where the sanders are going to be and stuff? How are you going to be able to move merchandise in and out of that area?
Well, I could use the fire truck access on the right-hand side. I mean, just as long as I kept that open, that could be my access in and out. Or there's also... I didn't draw it on the plan, but there is... You see by the square footage, there is a way to get in behind the garage also.
That's where that fence is currently, and like the shrubs, all the way over to the right side? You're going to clear that area out?
Yes. Yeah, oh, that would all be opened up, yes. Yep.
I wouldn't want to be a businessman today with all the rules and regulations, so it's... Yeah, it's not...
The Board of Health, we chatted a bit, and there's a vehicle that's growing into the woods that he spoke to about. What are you doing? I guess you've grown him so good into the woods that I didn't see that.
Mr. Bowen, you're going to make a lot of people upset this Christmas when they don't have their Christmas cards, because I removed that truck. I sold it.
Oh, okay.
Scrap man took it. Actually, I didn't sell it. The scrap man took it.
I hope you made a profit.
And it really hurt to see that drive away.
So it was dear to your heart. That's the one we talked about that was dear to your heart.
That's what we talked about. It was a 1952 Chevy GMC truck that was Mr. Patton's, Bernie Patton's truck, and...
Now it's melted steel, moving to China.
It really... I had to turn my head when that went down the street.
I understand.
And I thought that was an antique, and you and I didn't agree. You thought it was not an antique, and I did.
Yeah, it was amazing how we can perceive junk and treasures. My daughter tells me the same thing about junk and treasures, but so I understand our difference of opinion. The one thing that, if anybody wants to talk a little more, is that all right for the board?
I just have one question, sir. The... Mr. Chairman, the trash... You mentioned that there was no dumpster for yourself. How do you handle trash?
I put them in black plastic bags, and I bring it down to Airport Road in Pittsburgh. I found in the past, when I had a dumpster, it ended up to be a frequently-used dumpster by everyone and anyone, and it'd be full, but the second day it was emptied, so I suppose I could have put a padlock on it, but I... Plus, I was short on space. I figured it was better just to... I transported myself down Airport Road.
Is it... Anybody else ahead of me? Is it understood that, in what you said, you probably have few cars and do your activity offline, which I understand, but the mission and the request is for used car auto sales, so that would imply that you're aggressively pursuing the activity to do business from the base, from the property? You would understand that one of the conditions, if granted, would be that the vehicles are going to be of premium type of which you sell, registerable, fully registerable and ready to go, not just put in symbolic cars and say, "This is it," and then they stay there, and you go off and do your thing, and there's no real intent to become viable business at the site? Which brings me to the next point. How do you anticipate the signage regarding the new activity?
As far as the advertising?
Signage.
Just like to leave the sign that's on the building. I don't need a... I don't think Lunenburg allows a street sign out on the street, do you?
Okay. That's a double-edged sword, that you'd want to advertise clearly with the signage you have. I would assume you'd have to dress it up some way.
Right.
And I think the neighbors, because of the unique position that you're in, would be more happy if you didn't put a lot of signs. But you can comply with the Lunenburg signed bylaw, so it would be expected that you would review that and to work in compliance with the requirements of that bylaw.
Sure.
Anything else?
Question regarding the Board of Health letter from Jim Greffy. He's outlined five conditions here, and I guess one of the questions in my mind is, who's going to oversee the compliance with these conditions? And how, what frequency?
Are you saying it's Board of Health, or is it Board of Health using the normal interpretations that the Zoning Board of Appeals applies as conditions? How do you interpret what you're reading?
My question is just, who will be responsible for overseeing these conditions that have been outlined by Greffy?
I suggest that it would be that we incorporate these in our conditions, that they comply with all the conditions that the Board of Health, along with that list of conditions that we put on every used auto sales. You know, no junk, no cast, no pots, no... A lot of them are the same. They reflect the same... And I don't have that list in front of me, but I suggest that all of those conditions apply to this business.
Want to speak?
Nope.
I missed what you said. Oh, too loud?
I didn't have the letter. I didn't have the list of the standard conditions.
Oh, the standard conditions, yes. But we've discussed the standard conditions before, as with any other used car operations, and there are a whole litany of... And we've discussed them before.
Right.
They will become a part of any permit granted by this board, and then the others. So then, taking up your point, that the enforcement of it would come under the building inspector, the enforcing officer, and then always to this board to pull the special permit if you're in noncompliance. That would really say that if you don't comply and you start putting junk outside, usually what happens, the trigger function of the neighbors. And I think that the neighbors would, up to this point in time, are a little bit impressed or favorably disposed of the cleanup you've done so far. But I think you, we, and the neighbors are looking forward, if we grant, that the grooming will continue, and they will be happy. But if you started to put junk outside and it become obvious, then one call from the neighbors to this board, to the building inspector, where both, we share the same office, and this board does with him. share the same office, and this board does with him, and then he's the enforcing officer who will come down and apply the normal enforcing that we have. And so it'd be Mike, the enforcing officer that I control. Do you have any dispute with that?
No, I just wanted it to be clear that all the conditions got to be subject to oversight by the building commissioner, basically.
And that is so stated, that in the granting of the permit, and if we granted, I'll read you the verbiage associated with that, that you have to be in compliance with all boards' regulations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and we don't miss one. We carry them all the way through, that you have to be in compliance. And so therefore, if you are out of compliance, then we get the negative feedback, and therefore, we're the forcing function, which directs the enforcing officer to investigate, to report back to the board, and then we, if it was egregious, would call you back in and with the potential to pull the special permit. So you should be sensitive to that, and the neighbors should be happy carrying on with those circumstances. There's one other issue. If nobody else has a question, I have another thought on the matter.
Another question, and that is with the other letter we read into the record tonight, because this was an agreement that was made with the town to catch up on the payments on what's owed to the town, and that doesn't seem to have happened.
I'll go see the building, I'm sorry, the treasurer tomorrow, but by next Tuesday, I should, I will be caught up. But I believe it would be, I'm just behind August, and I'll be current by paying September next week. But according to my records, I'm paid through July.
Well, it seems like we've had several of these letters over the continuations of these meetings, and I would have hoped that that would have been resolved by now, and it obviously is not. So I'm concerned about that.
The only comment I have in that regard is, in addition, if you, if this board were to grant the special permit to create this operation, with all of the requirements that are posted that go along with it, which are extensive, and if you comply with it, then you would have met the intent of this board in granting. One other obstacle sits in front of you, and that's the Class II license. That comes down to the Board of Selectmen. And the financial thing could be a stopper for all of it. I sense, I just sense, that you may be denied by the Board of Selectmen if that isn't satisfied to their requirements. This board also shares the same feeling, I believe. And in the potential granting, in other words, taking steps to grant, we can condition or direct the financial situation that this board would require that you are in compliance, and that would flag to the Board of Selectmen. I think that would be too large a hurdle for you to get over in the approval of this as to one of the compliance things, because of your unique situation. And that would also carry forward when the Board of Selectmen read the, if we grant, read the granting of the special permit.
I understand.
We need to be tight in terms of what we have. And Lisa, do you have that thought process in mind of requiring complete adherence to the financial directives of the?
If you make it a part of the special permit?
Yeah, I'm trying to just make a little footnote.
Oh, absolutely.
We get to summarize, if we grant, to add those things to it. And with that, I think I've said all I can say.
I just wanted to question hours of operation again, because this is, in addition, you know, with the used car, you might have changed what you presently do. I don't know if you've thought about that.
Just Saturdays, I would ask that I could stay open. I think my sign says on Saturdays, it was eight to 12, but I'd like to keep it open till three, 3:30 on a Saturday.
And that would be strictly for car sales? You wouldn't be doing your repair work then? Is the repair work in the garage or outside?
It's mostly done inside, so, you know, keep the repair business to eight to 12, and then, but the car sales could be open till three. Keep the repair shop the same hours and just extend to three hours, three and a half hours more on a Saturday.
Okay. Any further questions?
Well, just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I mean, the granting of the special permit to, you know, run the used car sales down there really does him no good unless he goes through the Selectmen and gets the Class II license.
That's his next step.
So I think that's a check, as far as the financial things and stuff. If he's not up to date when he gets his appointment before the Selectmen, then he's not getting the Class II, and this really has no meaning. So I think I would be in favor of.
But then, just put this one step further. In terms of what we put in writing, as I suggested to Lisa, should there be a particular requirement to be in compliance with the tax regulations?
I don't think it would hurt, but I would suspect that everybody who goes to the town for a business license, that's an automatic check.
Yeah.
Whether or not they're up to compliance with their tax obligations.
And I would agree with that. Do you think we need to address?
It wouldn't hurt, Mr. Chairman, to add language like that, in my opinion.
Okay. It really directs that we're sitting here saying, potentially to grant, and yet we know that there's a major obstacle sitting in the way, and we should be duly recognize that in this case.
Yeah, you've made the applicant well aware of that, Mr. Chairman, so he knows that this isn't the end of the trail.
All right. Any further questions?
What were your hours Monday through Friday again?
Seven thirty to five, and Saturdays was eight to 12.
The only other thought I have in my mind is, the board would normally, in granting used car, the site is always in final preparation. It's there to be done, and what we're doing is we don't have to turn around and say, "Thou shalt" to A, B, C, D, E, F, G. In this case, we're not complete. In other words, if I drove by today and the lawn and everything were perfectly groomed, I'd say, "You're prepared to do work." I personally don't think that you're prepared to operate, and there's more work to be done. And while I sit thinking that I want to grant, when do we get it? It's like removing the gas bombs from, you know, we're all set.
Right.
But how do we, how do we complete the project? Okay, but it takes time, and we recognize it. I'd like to, the thoughts of the board in that, in that regard, as to how, if we grant, grant, and then feel comfortable that the site is properly groomed to, for to conduct professional business. Thoughts on that matter? Or do we just grant and let it be?
I would ask the applicant.
Pardon?
I would ask the applicant. I think that part of what you're having with the financials paying everything out, in fact, that you're not doing the business that you need to be doing to generate the income, to be able to pay the things that you need to pay. And I know that you're probably anxious to get going, but I think, I can hear what Don's saying. You're not quite there yet. So what is your timeline? What, when did you expect to start getting cars, selling cars, having the property ready? What is your timeline from here on out?
Well, my question to the board would be, how long before I can get in front of the Selectmen? Is it 30 days, 45?
Say again?
How long before I could get in front of the Selectmen? Because the next step would be to talk to the building inspector to make sure the building is compliance, in compliance to run a car business, and then I'd have to get on a hearing for the Selectmen. Is that two, is that two weeks out, four weeks out?
I can't speak. I guess I don't quite understand what you're saying. That's because I don't have all my, the other here and aid on, so let's.
I think, Mr. Chairman, he's saying, if we should grant this tonight, when will he be able to go before the Selectmen to apply for his Class II license?
Well.
I'm just curious what the timeline is. I don't know.
Okay. Our timeline is pretty standard, so if we, if we grant the permit tonight, we have 14 days to record it as granted, and it's granted, okay? And then there's a 20-day appeal period, that anybody can appeal the decision of this board, like a neighbor would say, he shouldn't, the board shouldn't have done it, and take us to Superior Court for what they would say is a faulty decision for the reasons that they described. So that, so it's 14 days plus the 20 days. That's the, then everything is complete at that point in time. It would, it would seem to me that they should be able to prep to go to the Selectmen almost at any time, wouldn't you think?
I would think as long as their agenda was open.
Yeah. So that's between, that's a question to ask of the Selectmen. Upon approval of this board, at what point, in the threshold which I just described, do they then accept a hearing to grant the Class II license?
Okay, so it's 34 days, but I'm, I feel as though I'm 14 days out. After talking to the Board of Health, he and I are on the same page, and I'm seven days out with him for what I've got to do. There's a couple more spots that he wants me to address. He's coming back next. He's in town next Wednesday, so he'll inspect those spots next Wednesday, and then I, I'll pave those spots and or graded base. So I'm 14 days away from being complete.
I see why you asked the question.
Right. Yeah, so I'm, it's 30 days with 30, 34 days anyways with the Selectmen, but I'm 14 days out of my work at the garage.
Any questions or?
I got a comment, Mr. Chairman, in regards to whether the applicant's, you know, prepared to move forward and stuff. Not long ago, we granted a used car permit to a business to, as of the last time I went by it, still hadn't brought the used cars out to the property, and still had other things where the used cars are going to go. So, I mean, we didn't put that requirement on that particular business. So that would just be my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I think the concern here is that, you know, what we're doing, because of the condition that this particular lot was in, I think we're looking at a different situation on this, because it's also abutted by a lot of neighbors. You know, it's kind of like spot zoned. So it's just really different.
He's in an awkward spot where he's located.
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah. And I think what we're trying to say is, you know, you know, he's got to meet all these conditions before he can actually, you know, we want to grant a permit, but he's got to meet all of these conditions. He's not quite there yet. So, you know, when does this take effect?
Well.
We could always say that, you know, based on all these conditions being fulfilled or being met. Because, as he said, he's meeting with the Board of Health in another week or two. So, you know, if the Board of Health comes back and says, you know, he's met these conditions, everything's good. But I don't know how we would.
Well, our requirements that we have, which is quite detailed, says, and what are the things that we'd be concerned about? Based on the past history, and we look forward and we say, okay, the lot was in what we considered to be, you consider to be prized possessions, and we considered, and the neighbors as junk as we did. I think we've come to a settlement area, and then you have removed the things, even though it was pain in your heart. So, so the, the, when you get as old as I am, sometimes you trip up your thoughts. I was working on a good one. I digressed. But the conditions that we have say that thou shalt not have junk, okay? Well, that's a trigger right there of enforcement. So we're saying, if we grant it tonight, the expectation is that you'll go forward judiciously. And like you say, they may have not have done it for one month or two weeks, but they have it, but they have not been out of compliance, and they may be doing what we suggested earlier, be selling cars under the Class II license.
Oh, no doubt, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and as we would expect the petitioner to do.
We've heard Grant Plan, some other people who wanted to do what he wants to do, and then the cars have never materialized on the lot. So I suspect it was just to get the license, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I could see that. But we're saying that thou shalt have some cars per the plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And you agree in compliance with the number of vehicles. Whether you have the 10 or not, I think is an open issue, not controlled by us, as you have duly pointed out.
It was up to 10, so.
But I think that the conditions, the thing that I sense, at least I, is where we fall back to an unsightly situation. I think that the conditions that we have impressed and that are standard, thou shalt not have junk pots, thou shall not do certain repairs outside, et cetera, et cetera, that you have to comply with, are all enforceable. So I think, unless someone has any questions, that we have duly put our regulations in that, that they give us the tools to enforce if the applicant drifts. So with that, I would accept a motion for further discussion.
I'd like to move that we grant a special permit based on the conditions that have been enumerated this evening.
Okay. Second to the motion?
I will second it. I just want to clarify that, I know you said you had five dump trucks, but you would only have two on the property at a time. Are you comfortable with me conditioning two on the property at a time?
I'd be more comfortable with three, but that would be a max. It would be three.
I would add that condition.
Yeah.
There's plenty of room for three there.
We're going to put the numbers in, and so you'll have to depend upon your other site to pick up the slack so that you can continue to make your profits as necessary.
I'm sorry. Would these dump trucks be overnight in the front, or would you be able to put these dump trucks in the back overnight, these two or three?
I could put one. There's plenty of room in the back for one or two.
I can understand that you're working on one inside the garage or two inside the garage, but just not the vehicle, you know, the vehicles themselves outside the garage?
The problem with that, I'll be honest with you, like the one we brought down today, we took the pot, we took the pot out that was bad, and it's going to take us, now I got to go tomorrow morning to find that pot. So the truck is down. You can't, in most cases, you can't drive it around.
I understand that, but that truck is also inside a bay?
The one today was not.
Okay. You should mention that most of your repairs would be done inside.
Right. But in this case, there was already truck in the first bay. This other truck is nosed up to the door, and it's going to be down for a couple of days.
Okay. Yes, I think, from my understanding, that some of the neighbors, that's one of the things, is that trucks outside?
Yes.
And that sort. So anything you can do to, that's why the concern with when we move up to three.
Right, right.
And thou shalt not have an equipment yard, I think, right?
Right. I was going to say, you know, again, going back, that's why I'm asking about the trucks. The sanders, I think you said you wanted four. Is that correct?
I have three total.
Three? Okay. Would you mind that condition being in there, limited?
Nope. But the three, the three sanders, the sanders go in the back of two of the dump trucks, so it's a, it's a year-round, it's a year-round vehicle.
But again, I'm just trying to put numbers on things so we don't start.
Right.
Building. Because it is a small piece of property.
It is. It's hard to move there, too.
And you have to maintain buffers from Young's Road, Whalen Road.
Right.
You know, I would also like to, if you're planning to put this fence and shrubbery in here, security fence and shrubbery, I would actually like to condition that. The reason I'd like to condition is to make sure it's actually there, because that's kind of a buffer for the neighbors to what's out back there.
Okay.
So I think that, you know, if you're agreeable to. So I think that, you know, if you're agreeable to that, okay? And I would like to add that as well.
Sure, yep.
You got that, Lisa? Okay. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment, we've run over into the second meeting, Mr. Chairman, we might want to just acknowledge the applicant who were here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I had in my mind it was eight o'clock, we did, we did one of those seven-thirties, okay. I'd like to interrupt our meeting for a moment and go to the applicant and say, we could, we could put this meeting into recess and take your case, but if you bear with us, we'll...
No problem.
Okay, thank you for that. You do have the right to be heard on time.
I should have said it twenty minutes ago.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Did we wrap this up?
Yeah, I think we're about to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So with that, you've got everything that you think you need, Lisa?
Condition, the financials, the, I just want to make sure I have everything, the security fence and the shrubbery, no equipment yard, but that's a standard, limited to three sanders, three trucks per day for repair, out at a time. Am I right? Was there one more?
Yep.
And then the snowplows? I didn't get a fixed number on that.
I don't think we...
I think they're the same, one and the same, in the winter time. All right, I think we're there, Mr. Chairman.
We're clear.
Pardon?
I believe we're there.
Okay.
In the standard conditions.
All right, if we're there...
In, in, in the conditions of the Board of Health.
Hours, yeah. Oh, absolutely, I knew that.
Okay, all those in favor of granting the petition as outlined, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and I'll say aye. Pardon?
I'm opposed.
Okay. You want to give a reason for the opposition or just let it stand?
The reason I'm opposed is that much of what we've heard tonight is a rehash of what we've heard the previous two meetings, and I'm not satisfied with what has been done as yet, and also I'm concerned about the report from the town treasurer and tax collector. According to that, agreement was to pay a thousand dollars a month from beginning May, and according to her, he's only made two payments of the thousand dollars since May, and this is September, so I know that you say there's a discrepancy in the bookkeeping, but it seems to me that should be resolved, so I don't feel comfortable in...
Didn't we put a condition there about financials, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, in other words, this, the granting of this is contingent upon many things, and in this case, we put the financials as a contingency that allows us to take back the granting of the permit. The other one is, I would only say, and I appreciate what you're, you're talking, is that the, the lot is not groomed, but from where we came, it is substantially removed of the debris, ala antiques, but has been removed, and we're in a better condition for the neighborhood. Sometimes things you do, you do for the benefit of others if you can feather it in. So the, so we, we say that the Board of Selectmen, which I believe strongly would uphold the financials, we uphold it and flag it to the selectmen, I think. I'm just trying to respond, and I appreciate your negativity, and it will remain there, of course. So with that, we have four members agreeing, one member in opposition. The requirement of this board is that four have to approve, therefore it has been approved with one negative vote. So now I have to, we've been talking so long, we forgot what we had to do. Get the old glasses on. So what happens is the, as I told you before, that in the granting of the special permit, we have to meet certain criteria, and I will read, that we always read, that the, in granting the special permit, the Board of Appeals shall assure, and I guess we did, that the proposed use would not be injurious, dangerous to the public health, or unduly hazardous because of traffic, contested danger of fire, explosions, or other reasons, that it would not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land, and the buildings in the neighborhood are in the amenities thereof. Because of unique position, the board, I think, accurately commit that compliance, that it would be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open uses, and I think we've discussed that extensively and put checks and balances in to get compliance. And it would not produce noise, vibration, and this is standard, so if you do, then it's, it's allowed to come down quickly. Would not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable from the lot lines, and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent properties, and you are sitting, the normal use of the adjacent properties have to be residential, so that you have to have a higher sensitivity, I would think, than if you're in a commercial in that regard. The special authorization is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, and this is where we addressed it very deeply, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable state, local, or federal boards or agencies with jurisdictions over the premises. The granting of special permit shall inure to the benefit of the applicant, which is you, and shall cease in the event the business is sold or sublet to another party. Special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit-granting authority, that's the zoning board, or the enforcing officer to ensure compliance with the enumerated conditions. Noncompliance of these conditions may result in the revocation of the permit. So that's what we have to do. You should duly record the granting of this with the registry of deeds, and the timeline we've already given you, that we have thirteen days to get it to the town clerk, and a twenty day that someone can appeal the decision of this board. And with that, we wish you luck, we wish your neighbors hopefully will be happy with you as you're cleaned up.
Appreciate it.
Business, and we wish you success.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Good luck with the new part of your business.
Thank you.
Pass them down.
Thank you, sir.
What is it, bud?
Yeah, please, shortening of beer.
We normally tick these meetings off, like on the hour, and I was watching the clock, but I did...
You're fine, Mr. Bowen, we have no place to go this evening.
Okay.
Please, Paul.
With that, we all sit here?
You bet.
Okay, I would like to welcome you to the Zoning Board of Appeals, as we do all people, and this case tonight is Ronald Smith and Lucy Hawkins of Old Farm Road, Lunenburg, for special permit for dimensional variations to construct a new dwelling that does not meet the forty-foot setback regulation. To tell you how we run the meeting is Lisa will read your application, and then you comment on it, you don't have to, but you can if you would like, and with that, then we go for public opinion for someone who might be opposed or to support the issue. We cut off public discussion, if there's nobody here, we'll do it automatic, but we do it. And then we bring it to the board, the board discusses, and we make a decision. And Lisa, would you please?
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Ronald Smith and Lucy Hawkins of 110 Old Farm Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows: Special permit for dimensional variation to construct a new dwelling that does not meet the forty-foot setback regulation. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application for special permit is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section Eight, Three, Two, One, B, Two. The street address is 340 New West Townsend Road, Assessors Map Thirty-five, Parcel Sixteen. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Ronald Smith and Lucy Hawkins of 110 Old Farm Road in Lunenburg. The deed was recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book Seven, Nine, Seven, Seven, Page Three, Four, Zero, recorded eight sixteen, two thousand and thirteen. The special permit questions have been answered as follows. A, will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons. We would be building a three-bedroom, single-family home to replace the older home that was burned down. B, will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The new home would be modern, two-story colonial with improved setback, and should have a positive value effect on land values in the neighborhood. Will not be operated with reasonable regard, will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. It is not an open use. D, will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines, and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. Will not produce noise, any of the above, except for some noise during construction. Under signed August twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, by Ronald P. Smith and Lucy Hawkins of 110 Old Farm Road in Lunenburg. Attached is a letter dated November fourth, two thousand and eleven, to Roger Stewart, who was the former owner of the property, regarding rebuilding a structure due to fire. Dear Roger, at your request, I am responding to your inquiry as, to your right to rebuild the single-family dwelling at 340 New West Townsend Road. The dwelling was destroyed by fire and was considered to be a pre-existing, non-conforming structure that lacked the minimum front setback of the town zoning bylaw. Therefore, Section Seven, Four, Five of the Lunenburg Protective Bylaw allows you to rebuild on the same footprint, provided that the reconstruction is substantially completed within two years of the date of the fire. The Zoning Board of Appeals has a right to extend that time by two years due to hardship. That approval would have to be granted before the two-year by right exemption expired. It is my opinion that the rights under the bylaw can be extended to a new owner acting within the allotted time period under the bylaw. All other zoning dimensions and height restrictions under the bylaw that were not grandfathered prior to the fire would have to comply with the bylaws at the time of the issuance of the building permit, or relief would need to be sought by the Zoning Board of Appeals. A copy of the bylaw section has been enclosed, and the copy of the site plan will be put on file in my office, so a reference point of the front setback can be established prior to construction. If you have any requests in regards to this correspondence, please contact me at your convenience. Sincerely, Michael J. Savageo. Attached is the list of abutters, a site plan, the Assessors Field Card, a plan of the proposed home, and the septic plan showing the previous house and the proposed house. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you just pass?
I received a memo from the Board of Health today. This office has reviewed a plan for the construction of a three-bedroom house to replace the structure that was lost to fire. So long as the building does not exceed three bedrooms and maintains the required offsets from the on-site sewage disposal system, the board has no issues. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Your turn, if you want to talk.
Mr. Chairman, before, before, I have one observation. On the application, it referenced a, the zoning bylaw is A three, two, one, B, two, and in fact, it should be A three, two, one, B, four, as you had it on the public notice, notice of public hearing.
B four is correct?
Yes, in my opinion it is.
Okay. The board would accept the motion, assuming you're in agreement that the reference should be to B four? Please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, hear none? So we will go forward with the amended applicable bylaw to the town of the town of Lunenburg. Is that satisfied?
Yep.
Okay, fine. You're on.
Thank you. I can only reiterate what Lisa said. I'm Ron Smith, this is Lucy Hawkins. If you have the plan in front of you, I see some of you seem to be having it, you can see the proposed bedroom, three-bedroom house overlaid over the previous burned-down home.
I would make a note to the board. Usually when we get drawings, many times there are omissions in terms of dimensions and so forth, and when I first looked at it, I said, oh, here we go, no dimensions. But upon further investigation, what we have in front of us is properly scaled, and me and the building inspector applied the, applied the appropriate scale, and everything appears to be accurate as displayed without reference to specific dimensions.
If you would like, Mr. Chairman, I have plans since this petition, when that omission was found out, and they are referenced in dimension right here in front of me, if you'd like copies.
They are?
Yes, they are.
Well, I felt, because I didn't, you know, dig into the matter, I accepted it on the face value, since the scales were proper, and I checked with the building inspector. So unless the, well, I guess the more information we have, the better.
Can I come up?
Please. Okay, we're back on track there with the new plans, and go ahead and speak to what you would, you have the floor.
Sure, thank you. As you can see now, the dimensions have written there, have been written there, the replaced previous burned home used to be at its closest point, just over seventeen feet from the property line, and that's very close to a property line. With the, I don't want to call them geographical obstructions, but there is an obstruction with moving this house far enough back to meet your forty-foot setback. All other setbacks are okay. You have to stay twenty feet, you may know this, off of a existing trench, the system is relatively new, it's only ten years old. If we propose this house, it's only a twenty-six-foot house, front to back, the closest we can get puts the front, now instead of seventeen feet, about thirty foot, six inches off the street. It's a considerable improvement, but there's no way to bring it into zoning compliance, and that's what the special permit, you know, what we're here for. The garage, there's an existing garage that is not only not in compliance in the front zoning, it's even within the thirty-foot wetlands. So this is a garage we want to remove, and we want to attach a two-stall garage to the home. According to the building inspector, because the garage is not burned down, it doesn't fall under that bylaw, and that we need to make the front of the new garage meet the forty-foot setback, and that's why you see the garage jogged back from the corner of the new proposed home, and that does meet the bylaw. So the real issue, or the real thing that we can't do, is can't bring the new home exactly into the forty-foot, and that's why we're petitioning for the special permit. All other setbacks are met, and as Lisa just said, the Board of Health actually contacted me today just to tell me the same thing, that I didn't need to attend their meeting on Monday because the board approved, or the inspector okayed the plans, the board will meet Monday and do their formal thing, and we'll simply be moving that septic tank back, because there's an offset based on that as well. So by moving the septic tank, the existing septic tank, back, and then getting the extra room to push the house back, that's how we come to that distance.
So you're suggesting that your proposed building is more conforming than the previous?
Yes, sir. It's smaller in size, actually, in footprint size as well, on the main house, it's a neater design, and it gets us, you know, within eight and a half, nine and a half feet of being in conformity, but there's no way to bring it into conformity. So we brought it to as close as we dared to, which is twenty feet off of a septic trench. Your foundation drains cannot be any closer than that. So the obstruction is the existing septic system. So the obstruction is the existing septic system.
Okay. So the only issue in front of this board is, is the, given a dimensional variation of the setback from what was 30 feet, you can't comply with the 40 feet, and you're asking for 30.59.
That's correct.
Okay. Any, are you all set now?
I am, sir.
Okay, you can sit down and relax.
Thank you.
With that, I open it up. Public discussion is open. Unless someone wants to speak in favor or in opposition, I see none. With that, I cut off public discussion and bring it to the board. Gentlemen.
Right, any of the questions that I had, including the boundary line and all that, seemed to be answered with the new drawing and the explanation about the setback. Because I was wondering, after looking at it, why you couldn't move it further to the left. But obviously, with the wetlands, there are major problems on both sides, as well as anything further back, you can't go and move the septic system in front? There's no way around any of that.
It's a large lot, but less than a half an acre of it is really usable the rest of the top line.
Right.
Just got to worry about mosquitoes.
Yeah, because it's almost four, well, almost five acres, right?
I think it's 4.18.
Three separate ones joined.
Okay, any other questions?
I had some questions, but I noticed, I looked at the deed, and as you just mentioned, it shows that you have 4.18 acres in that deeded lot, which was a portion of what was conveyed to Shirley Stewart. The plan that was referenced in the deed also pulled off the registry of deeds, and it shows wetlands on there, which was interesting. It doesn't, where did this, the wetlands definition come from? This, I see this is a sanitarian, registered sanitarian, rather than a professional engineer, or, you know, I'm not even sure the difference. What is it?
The original plan, I believe you had two plans.
You'd have to come up.
He must have relaxed.
I believe you have the original Whitman &amp; Bingham plan as well. I submitted 14 copies of that, and then I submitted my new plan.
Never saw that. This is the one that I pulled off the registry of deeds.
You were saying, where did the wetlands delineation come from?
Yeah.
It came from this plan right here, which was when they put the system in, right here. Would you like this?
Is that a Whitman &amp; Bingham?
This is a Whitman &amp; Bingham plan when the house, prior to burning, obviously, had a new septic system installed, which is why the system still remains and the house is gone.
So that was superimposed on this plan?
Right, this plan was the plan we worked off of, because all of this is accurate. And then a new engineer did the overlay for me on the house. And then he went out there, and these flag marks here, there were some flags that were found. They were not all found, it's been some time.
Yeah.
We actually have a meeting before the Conservation Commission on next Wednesday, a week from today. On a notice of intent, we filed with them. We've inserted the hay bales and put everything in that place there, so we have a meeting with them to discuss any notice of intent issues with it. But this plan, I believe I submitted them. Do you have a copy?
I didn't have a copy of it in my package, but...
Did anybody else? The Whitman &amp; Bingham plan.
I thought we gave, maybe we didn't, but I thought we made 14 copies of the original plan and then the new plan, showing the septic tank moved and the new house overlaid.
Yeah, so we can get a copy of it.
Would you like one?
I think we ought to have one for the record.
Yeah.
Is it the one from Soil Smith Design?
No, Soil Smith is the new engineer. Whitman &amp; Bingham was the engineer that put the septic system in.
You had the drawing with Whitman &amp; Bingham?
I do.
Could you approach?
Absolutely. So this is when they installed the septic system?
That's when the wetlands were flagged, and obviously, you know, it's never exact of the history of the roads before that. That's the plan that originated everything? And of course, the new plan shows all that.
No, this is what I'm...
The house that was there overlaid to the new house.
Yeah, I gave you this one.
Yeah, so that's what I was assuming, that they used this to do the other plan. Because I don't know what credentialed a sanitarian is. The reason I asked is that, is that I wanted to make sure that we had a professional engineer that had identified the wetlands. Because the other thing that I did was, Lunenburg now has GIS maps online, and it doesn't even show the wetlands in this parcel. Because the parcel that's shown on the GIS map is the 5.06 acres, which the deed references. Only a portion of those, of that 5.06 was transferred to you. And your parcel is 4.18. I think that the recorded plan, which goes back to June 22, 2012, is that when this was? No, that was '99. But it shows parcel A and 1A, and the, so you were transferred to lot 1A, apparently. That's 4.18 acres.
That's correct. And that just took place five, six weeks ago.
So it looked like there was ample room in back of that when I looked at the GIS map to move the house back. But looking at this, why, it certainly clarifies it.
There's no room, if there was, I mean, even, you know, we could have put the house behind the septic system. But if you look at the topo on the ASBIL, which you have down in front of you with Whitman &amp; Bingham, it drops off like a rock. The street's at elevation 200, and you start going out back, and you're at 176. You're talking a 25-foot grade change. And that's all wetlands.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, you know, that's what it looked like when I went by the site. So the GIS map was very... From my perspective.
There were a couple ponds around there, too, that I never knew were there.
Well, everything down that whole side of that street, and eventually turns into a brook that crosses Northville Road, at the very end of Northville Road. But in that area, it's all just a wetland where the hills join it, and eventually it gets a quarter mile down the road, and it forms that brook that you see at the end of Northville. But you're right about the mosquitoes, Mr. Bowen, because I went out there with the hay baling, and it's a mosquito factory.
Are there any other questions from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think that you have...
Yeah, well, Lisa just mentioned that the Board of Health sent her a paper with this meeting tonight, just saying that they had no issues with it. They called me today, actually, the secretary, I believe, called me, and just asked me, why was I on her docket? And for Monday night. And I said, well, I put in a modification to a plan to move the tank back. And that, without moving the tank back, I can't move the house back. Apparently, Mr. Griffey approved that, or at least signed okay on it. Of course, their meeting doesn't take place until Monday. She said, you don't need to show up, is all she called me for. She said, you don't need to speak for the board, it's just a technical thing. And if you don't want to show up, you don't have to. She didn't tell me I was set to go. She said, but you don't need to show up.
Okay, so on here, I realize that the, you know, it's, you do show that the 10-foot were the, from the foundation to the tank, edge of the tank.
The new tank or the old?
The new proposed tank.
Yeah, okay.
Don't worry, I'm not worried about the old tank.
Okay.
And I would probably encourage you to just break it and put a new tank in. It's going to probably cost you more to move it. But anyway, the D-box has to be 20 feet, and I just don't see that dimension on here.
Well, the D-box is directly in line with the very first trench.
I understand that it is, but it doesn't show here the dimensions there. So I just was clarified on the board. They had reviewed it.
Yeah.
That somewhere in the plan, it showed the 20 feet. I don't have a...
It does show it on my overlay plan. It shows a 20-foot setback, minimum setback, on the overlay plan from the septic trench, it says.
The trench, that's correct.
Right. Well, the D-box is in line with it.
The trench is askew to the foundation. It only gets further away beyond that. So it's kind of covered under that, the fact that they're askew.
It doesn't show it also from the edge of the garage to the D-box, and that was the only thing. I just couldn't do it. Wanted to make sure that they had approved it.
Apparently, like I said, I got a call today just telling me that you didn't need to show up for that meeting, that Mr. Griffey had apparently looked at it and thought it was well enough that I didn't need to appear to speak to it. And so we'll know Monday night, I guess.
You had a further question?
Right. No, I think that's covered.
Okay, any other questions? If not, the board is prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit for a dimensional variation of seven feet, as requested and as shown on the plan.
Second.
Any further discussion in the matter? If not, are those in favor of granting the special, the special permit for dimensional variation? Please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, none? And now I have to do my reading. And you can sit down.
I have a bad knee.
Unless you want to challenge something, I have to say.
She finally smiled, she was so tense back there.
But you should listen, I guess, carefully, huh? In granting the special permit, the Board of Appeals shall assure, and we did, that the proposal was, would not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire explosion, or other reasons. We also found that it would not have material adverse effect in the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or in the amenities thereof. That it would be operated with reasonable regard to order and sightliness, but it's not in open use, so it's not applicable. And the other deals with noise, vibration, smoke, or dust. Keep the parties down, I guess, in that regard. The special authorization is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply